Mayor meeting of City Council February 22nd and ask for a roll call.
Jacobson?
Here.
Finnucan?
Here.
Markort?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Faber?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. I'll ask Officer Pullos to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions to the agenda as we have it presented? Hearing, no. No. I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Snow, roll call.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Okay. Thank you. We have no public hearing this evening. I'll move then to special items, presentation and citizen comments. Our initial item is proudly DeKalb feature, the fire department airport crash testing. I'll ask Chief Hicks to come forward and present this topic.
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. Tonight here, I'm going to showcase some training that we recently conducted at the airport. And that training was ARF training. ARF stands for Airport Rescue Firefighting. Not well known, but the fire department does have an unstaffed ARF program which is housed in one of the old hangars at the DeKalb Municipal Taylor Airport. ARF training is conducted annually to keep our personnel familiar with the ARF truck and how to operate safely on the airport property. The program was established a few years back in efforts to assist the program in achieving their Part 139 certificate. And for those who don't know, Part 139 gives the ability for the airport to have scheduled and unscheduled flights for aircrafts more than 30 seats. We talked a little about our truck. The truck that we currently have is a 2001 model. It was purchased used from the Peoria Airport about three or four years ago. It has a water pump of 1,250 gallons on it. The capacity of the water is 1,500 gallons which it carries. It can also flow through the roof turret 750 gallons. I'm going to show this in a short video in here in one second. We also carry 200 gallons of A triple F concentrate. And we also use this truck to supply firefighting to offsite flammable liquid fires such as railroad or tanker truck. It also carries 500 gallons, 500 pounds of Purple Cave fire extinguishment. So if I can get Jeff to fire up a short video here for us. We also want to thank Dimco and Lovett's Towing. They move the, this aircraft to usual I talk. That's the roof turret I was telling you about. That's flowing about 750 gallons a minute. So there's about two to three minutes of water on the truck flowing at that rate. And what we're going to practice here is extinguishment of a engine fire. So this firefighter is getting off the truck. He's going to pull one of the front hand lines and then go up and extinguish an engine compartment fire. Our trucks are designed to be operated by one or two people. Normally the fires are a lot larger due to the fuel, the jet fuel that's carried on them. This is hay bales burning here for example. The next part of the training is driver's training. And we have a course set up out there. It's off-road course. So firefighters can get experience driving on both road train and then train that's off-road with some different angles. It's very top heavy, so you want to train to make sure that they don't blow the trucks. This is doing it right there. KAVU, very noisy, very rough inside. This truck has off-road capability, so it's all-wheel drive. So that's the ARF training. So I want to thank Alderman Finnucan for coming out. He came out and rode us for a while. We also had the opportunity, the same night we produced this video, to use this on a fire just north of town and a field fire out at a farmhouse. So it's something we do use off-site of the airport occasionally. If there's any questions, I'll answer them now.
Chief, the individual firefighter was moving into smoke-filled conflagration. Visibility must be impaired.
It is, they have their air pack on. I mean, it's kind of like, it's better than structural firefighting, but it is visibly impaired.
Okay. So it's, is it skill that allows the firefighter to move away from that, the impaired vision?
Yeah, that's correct. And we use the, that extra fog nozzle above to even make that even worse, so they have a harder time getting up there.
I see. Other questions of Chief Hicks?
I'd like to thank you for the presentation this evening, Chief. Moving to the next item, Storm Ready Community Certification Presentation by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. Noah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The Storm Ready Program helps community leaders and emergency managers strengthen their local safety program and communication and safety skills needed to save lives and property before, during, and after severe weather strikes. No community is storm-proof, but Storm Ready can help communities save lives. In order for a community to become storm-ready, communities must have redundant methods of monitoring the weather, receiving watches and warnings from the National Weather Service, and disseminating severe weather warnings throughout the community. Finally, these requirements will be reviewed every three years in order to maintain Storm Ready status. On behalf of the Storm Ready Advisory Board, which includes representatives from the National Weather Service, the Illinois Emergency Services Management Association, or IASMA, and the Illinois Emergency Management Association, or IEMA, I'd like to congratulate the city of DeKalb for becoming the 72nd storm-ready community in the state of Illinois. In particular, I'd like to thank Jason Leverton, Latoya Mars, Greg Hoyle, Mark Espy, and Gilbert Sebenst for their hard work in establishing DeKalb as a storm-ready community. I do have a sign that can be hung in the city that I'd like to present to DeKalb Police Commander Jason Leverton.
Thank you, Ben. We certainly are honored to receive this certification on behalf of the city of DeKalb. We all know that there was a large catastrophic tornado in the Fairdale area just last year, which served as a reminder that severe significant storm events can occur here, they will occur again. And even though historically the city has taken preparedness efforts, going through this program with the National Weather Service and with NIU Weather and the assistance of Gilbert Sebenstey, we felt that these additional components of making sure all of our community departments are working together to be prepared to disseminate storm warnings and to provide community education would certainly go a long way to be prepared when that next one does hit. So again, appreciate the assistance that took several members from different departments behind the scenes. But again, this is a community effort. This is for the community. And we're pleased to work with the National Weather Service to provide additional training. In fact, we just held a weather spotter class last week at the police department. We filled our training room with 84 attendees, which we were very pleased with that turnout and those type of events. We just hope to continue as well. So Mayor, if I could, I'd like to approach the dais and present this before you. And if I could kindly ask our city manager, police chief, fire chief, and public works director if they'd like to join me as well. And I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Jason, as we're assembling, could you introduce Ben and his relationship, please?
So again, in order to receive this certification, we worked with a number of folks at the Romeoville Office of the National Weather Service. Ben works out of that office at the National Weather Service and made the trip up here tonight to provide this official sign for us that we can display. And again, thanks to Ben and his staff for their assistance along the way.
Do council members want to stand behind this?
No, that's okay. You're fine.
We didn't bring our suits and ties.
Question for either Ben or Gilbert. How long has Northern Illinois University been storm-ready campus?
Yeah, we've been storm-ready since 2002. So it's been about 14 years now. 14 years, yeah, since we've been storm-ready here at the university.
And Gilbert, thank you for your participation in readying the city as well.
Glad to serve, and it's quite an honor for you, all of you, to get this award for your great preparedness for severe weather and other weather-related emergency incidents that will invariably happen from time to time here.
Thank you. Okay, we have before us several mayoral appointments. The reappointment of Dave Conlon to Finance Advisory Committee for completion of a four-year term through June 30th, 2018. A reappointment of Tom Derzinski to the Finance Advisory Committee for completion of a four-year term through June 30th, 2019. Reappointment of Ray Kruger to the Fire Pension Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30th, 2018. And reappointment of Tony Chulick to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for the completion of a three-year term through June 30th, 2017. The reappointment of Sam Finch to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for the completion of a three-year term through June 30th, 2018. I would entertain a motion to approve those recommended appointments, or reappointments.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. Discussion, I'll ask for, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. I would note for council and the public's information that I am in the process of reviewing additional appointments to commissions and the commission structure. So hopefully in the next upcoming council meetings, you'll see more reappointments coming before us. The public participation, I've got two individuals registered to speak. Steve Capitan. And I would note, as Steve is approaching the podium, we have posted a clarification with the speaker request forms that we're asking that individuals register to speak for both the committee of the hall and the council meetings. Steve?
Yes, my name is Steve Capitan, resident of the 3rd Ward. I wanted to address the issue of the Sycamore Agreement with Brian Bemis and moving the car dealership. issue of the Sycamore Agreement with Brian Bemis and moving the car dealership. I've spoken with a couple of council members about my concerns about this, what's going on in this instance and what has preceded it in past years in areas where the cities have basically raided each other's businesses through the application of incentives. And to illustrate the point of my concern, that in poking each other's eyes out makes us both blind. We hurt each other's community, the whole area is hurt by those kind of efforts, where one city is taking another's business through incentives. And whether it be through agreements between the cities, we have a boundary agreement, which was a very positive step that came out of some previous conflicts in which the City of DeKalb ironically raided the same dealership with incentives to bring it from Bethany and Sycamore Road in Sycamore to its present location. And now, full circle, it's being, it's, they've made an agreement to return it to Sycamore. And the businesses are the ones that walk away with the benefits of that, and the taxpayers are the ones that are hurt. So whatever efforts the city can make in working with Sycamore to try and end this practice, or even better, state legislation that would put some control on this kind of thing, we've got to stop this process of raiding each other's businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Jim Mason?
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, citizens, staff, I'm Jim Mason. And can you hear me? Good. Over the last year, we have worked with security properties on some monumental projects. I have, I have my statement here that I've given the alderman and the city attorney and the city manager. I would like clarification, I'd like clarification if the vote on August 24th passed or failed on first reading. I went to court to get Bill Brady, the judge, to make a decision, and he waffled. He waffled, and he would not make a decision. So I pulled, I pulled it off the agenda. It's in abeyance for a year, probably another eight months. But with the storm season coming and University Village in limbo, I think the citizens deserve an answer whether or not a 3-3, 3-4, 3-against vote passed. We all know it takes 5-3 with the elected officials. And I like, I would like, Dean has filed a motion to dismiss my lawsuit, and it's not, it's a waste of time. I think Dean and the city council owe it to the citizens of DeKalb to answer if a 3-3 vote passed on first reading, or the mayor voted and made it 4 to 3. And we all know it takes 5 to 3 in the affirmative, in the affirmative. The 7th ward wasn't there. Most courts would say it was a no vote. So it was probably 4-3 against. So what I've done is I've laid out here to the public officials, my position, the case law, over and over and over. And I would hope that Dean would make a press release, either they think it passed or it failed. So I know what to do before the time runs out. Is that fair? I think so. Got some good news. I met with Ellen DeVita and Tom Cleveland, and I know Ellen is overloaded. I've made a proposal. Let me back up a second. I actually had my own airline 15, 20 years ago. It's called JCM Leasing. I operated turboprops out of the DeKalb Airport. I flew dignitaries all over the United States. I terminated that business, so I actually know what I'm talking about when it comes to airports and heavy aircraft and moving people around. City of DeKalb is selling 12 loads a year jet fuel. You're making 100 grand. I'm proposing to cut the price of jet fuel to $1.99 to the public, the whole United States. Come in here, buy your jet fuel, and eventually you'll build a hangar and you'll probably put a factory in this place. Aviation is, is the nuts and bolts of industry. You have everything you need out there, everything. Drop back 40 years, I was in the gasoline business when I went to college. I got bored with classes, so I ran a business, 1967, January of 67. I know this business also. I sold more gas in DeKalb than any other gasoline retailer. And the best part was, I made more money than the professors. So what I'm proposing here is that DeKalb become a refiller for the United States and set a spread of 59 cents over wholesale, which should bring you right in at $1.99. Stick with that price, you won't believe what's going to happen. You can take G4s, G5s, 840s, you can take almost every, all commercial, excuse me, all corporate jets. Ellen tells me you got 80 or 100 acres across the street, you could have a hangar row. They just built a brand-new hangar out there, as you all know. Have you all seen it yet? Okay. That's a small hangar. So across the street, there could be a 1031 trade, the city could take that property. The federal government will put up tons of money, both for corporate and for the city. And if my proposal would work over two or three years, you could sell 700, 800,000 gallons of jet fuel out there a year and make another quarter of a million off volume, instead of sitting there letting the dust settle on these machines. So Ellen's real busy. She just told me a few minutes ago she has some things to check out. The gentleman in the back is, I'm going to spend time with him. And I'd like to see something happen out there, because there is a lot of room in your airport to make things happen. I want to thank you very much. Thank you.
Dean, you get back to me if you ever can. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm assuming anyone wishing to speak has registered with the city clerk. I have no one else registered. We'll move on then to consent agenda. We have before us the consent agenda. Are there any items council members wish to remove from consent? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve consent agenda as we have it before us. So moved. Moved by Alderman Finuchen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquardt. Roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchen?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. With the consent agenda before us, I'll ask for a motion to approve the items on consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchen?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Moving to separate action, Resolution 201616, recognizing the DeKalb Area Arts Council's arts, culture, and entertainment corridor.
I'd like to, at the request of the Arts Council, I'd like to make a motion to table this resolution until the next scheduled, until the next scheduled city council meeting, to give the group an opportunity to review it further and make appropriate changes. And then it will come back before the council.
Okay. We have a motion before us then to table Resolution 201616 until the March 24th council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Finuchen.
Is it March 24th? Is the next one?
No. March 14th is next, isn't it, Anne Marie?
Yes.
March 14th.
March 14th.
Yes. Any discussion, well, roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchen?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Sure, yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2000, well, let me just comment that appreciation for the DeKalb Area Arts Council's work, continuing work on the ACE corridor, and I'll look forward to further discussion on that item at our next meeting. Resolution 201617, adopting the DeKalb 2025 Strategic Plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Finuchen. Discussion. Let me turn to city manager, Gora.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the city has embarked on a multi-year collaborative grassroots strategic planning effort. This process stemmed from the council's indication of its aspirations for a long-term planning process for the city. Strategic planning, which is a systemic process by which a community plans for its future, produces a plan to guide specific and measurable actions to assist the city in achieving its goals. This goes back to 2014. So following the strategic planning retreat by the city council in March of 2014, the city initiated its strategic planning process with the Center for Governmental Studies at Northern Illinois University. In June of that year, the council approved an agreement with the center for development of a strategic plan document. Throughout 2014 and into 2015, the center gathered data and information from the community in order to shape a framework for plan development. The center conducted a community survey that resulted in the revision of the scope of the project to expand and include input from underrepresented populations. After revision of the scope of the document and subsequent timeline changes were approved by the council, the center initiated an intensified outreach process that included targeted meetings and focus group-style conversations. That outreach was conducted from May to July of 2015 and resulted in a strategic plan framework document. The document incorporated feedback from 15 community conversations, including 48 small group discussions to guide the next step of the process. In 2015, the city council and staff convened for another strategic planning retreat to review the draft framework. Using the framework shaped by the various community conversations and the retreat, the center and city staff compiled a draft strategic plan to guide the city's activities. The draft strategic plan document was made available to the public on November 19th, and community members were invited to provide comments and suggestions for the document. The center gathered those comments and worked with staff to incorporate the comments appropriately. The comments were reviewed by the council at a retreat on January 14th of this year. And the retreat was an opportunity for the council to not only review the comments, but to ask questions, contemplate changes, engage in discussion, to ensure all aspects of the plan were deliberately considered. At this time, staff is seeking approval for adoption and incorporation of the DeKalb 2025 Strategic Plan document. At this point, I just want to, number one, thank the mayor and the council for their leadership and foresight in moving forward on a 10-year strategic plan. As I've said before in our meetings, most communities, when they go down this path, may look to embark on a five-year plan. And through your vision, you've decided you wanted to look a longer-range period of time, and you decided to go with the 10-year period. And secondly, I'd like to thank the community for their input. I know all the data is included in the strategic plan as far as the number of people from the community that participated. I know Assistant City Manager Patty Happenstett and myself came to those community conversations to give an overview of the input that we were seeking, and the community responded. So we're eternally grateful for that input. I also want to personally thank Diana Robertson of the Center for Governmental Studies, who spent a number, I don't even know how much time she spent on this, she went above and beyond the scope of services of the agreement between the city and the center, just did an extraordinary job. And in the conversations I had with her, she pointed out she was doing that because she knows the importance of the document to the future of the community and, and basically for the love of the community. The two staff people I want to point out in particular would be, number one, Patty Happenstett, our Assistant City Manager, who was the project coordinator on this, who spent countless hours working with Diana as the point person for the city. And I'd also like to thank Lauren Stott, our management analyst, who also worked with Assistant Manager Happenstett in formatting the document. And the document you have before you, I mean, the formatting, credit goes to, I believe, Management Analyst and Assistant City Manager Happenstett. It's a very living document. It's a great document. It's one that's going to guide us. The next step of the process then is, we're seeking formal adoption of the plan by the council this evening. We would then move forward of putting this into place. Our first plan of trying to tie all of these items into the actual budget process will be part of the fiscal year 17 budget process. We're still, we're implementing many of these items already, many of the projects that you're aware of. But as far as trying to create a formal process of going through the strategic plan with the council and tying those into the budget, we're recommending that be tied into fiscal year 17. Part of the reasoning behind that is what you're going to see in what we're calling fiscal year 16 and a half, that six-month budget, is we're going to recommend a software for the strategic plan that, as staff, will help us be able to monitor and manage implementation of the plan. So each of these items, each of these action plans that are included in the plan will be assigned to a specific department, will be assigned to a specific project coordinator, and by having the software, we'll be able to track it, you'll be able to monitor it, the community will be able to monitor it. So we will still move forward on implementing many of these items in the strategic plan, but as formal tying it into the document, because of that technology and that software, our recommendation would be to officially tie it into fiscal year 17 budget process. And with that, I'll gladly answer any questions that you have, and looking forward to working on making the strategic plan implementation a reality.
Questions of Anne Marie, Alderman Noriko.
I would just like to comment that as a new alderman, working on this process gave me a much better feel for the citizens, the citizens' concerns, appreciation for the city staff. It was a very exciting process. It will be even more exciting to see these plans implemented. And I think it will be wonderful for citizens to also be able to follow the progress. I know on other issues, I've heard from citizens, you know, how can we, you know, check on this? So I think that's a wonderful idea.
And I would recognize that prior councils have had strategic plans in place, have had goals and actions in place tied in with the annual city budget. I think the level of effort that has gone into not only the consulting work that Center for Governmental Studies has done, but the extensive work that staff, work, effort and time that staff has put into this document makes it a living instrument that can be a guide for us. And it will be a living document. We will revisit it periodically, but we'll, I'm pleased to see us taking this tenure focus and horizon. So thank you, Anne Marie, and the staff that have, have worked on getting the document to the point we have it now. Other comments or discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none, I'll ask for, all those in favor of, well, let me ask for a roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 2016-6, authorizing a special use permit for a fast-food restaurant and drive-thru located at 446 to 460 East Lincoln Highway, Dunkin' Donuts. And we're asked to consider this passage on first reading, waiver of second reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Fanukin, and I assume that's a motion to pass and waive second reading?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And seconded by Alderman Jacobson?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. City Manager, do you wish to introduce this?
I believe our Community Development Director, Ellen DeVito, is going to give an overview of this project.
Excellent. Ellen?
Good evening, everyone. Deepak Desai, one of the owners of, on the partnership, I should say, one of the partners in the project, is here in the audience with us, his architect and manager as well, if you have additional questions.
Thank you.
So I think everyone knows the site. It's the former Sawyer Automotive at the southwest corner of Fifth and Lincoln Highway. The buildings that had housed the auto dealership were demolished in 2014, and sewer connections were terminated in 2015. We've been talking with them for about six months now in regards to design of the building. Derek Highland has been very, very active in that. He's not here tonight. He went home, not feeling, he's up, he's a little under the weather tonight. So Derek did a really nice job with the design, and from the original size of a 9,300 square-foot building, we're now looking at a 7,600 square-foot building with five tenants and a drive-thru, and then a patio was put up front to create some public interest at the street. So the action before you tonight is simply the special use for the drive-thru. The ordinance requires special use permits for all drive-throughs, and then actual details on the building would come forth at a different date, at building permit time. But this is an allowed use in the commercial business district. There was discussion at Planning and Zoning regarding circulation. The Planning and Zoning Commission felt that since the proposed drive-thru will access on Fifth Street, it would not exacerbate the problems on Lincoln Highway, and there was unanimous approval from the commission.
Ellen, wasn't the alley expanded as well?
We don't have final documents in place, but yes, that's one of the considerations. The alley will be wide at that end for two-way traffic.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So before us this evening is the question of authorizing the special use permit. Are there questions of Ellen from council? Alderman Baker?
Well, this shouldn't be surprising to anyone. I always think downtown needs much more parking. Some of the old plans that were tossed around for several years now have been brought to me on a one-on-one basis from neighboring businesses concerned about, maybe the building ought to be set back, like Levels Tire, concerned about what will happen with the alleyway. Is Wendler Engineering Property still available for sale? And if so, do you know the last time any price was floated on that for parking thoughts?
I have to look up, it is still for sale. I'd have to look up the price for you. In terms of the urban design that you're talking about, the project that we've been bringing through that went to Planning and Zoning matches the downtown design guidelines that the council adopted, which have a zero lot line up at the street face with the parking in the rear. I understand that Levels is not, the parking is in the front, but this is what matches what's on the books right now. And then the parking as well, the code does not require a parking ratio in the central core of the district. It's like Oak to Seventh, I have to read it from the ordinance to you, but this meets the code as it's being designed right now.
I fully understand it meets the code. In the years I've been up here, there's even been discussion of the state of Illinois widening all four corners of that intersection, which means this building would have to go. I think it'll go in our lifetime if you put it up that far. And that's my only concern. We have an opportunity right now. Wendler's has been for sale for quite some time, and parking is $6,000 or $8,000 parking space. When you leave it flat and you don't build a parking deck, it's not very much money. We've had a very little parking when we could use a lot. And there was a business downtown that closed very recently, a week ago, and they cited their number one reason for closing is lack of parking, that they could get people to park and make it into their store, and it was right on Lincoln Highway. I'm happy with this plan, I'll approve it, but it's the 11th hour, it wouldn't hurt to throw the idea of the parking, and the reason I'm bringing it up in open session is that I'm sure there'll be plenty of opinions in the community on whether they like it or don't like it, and here we have an opportunity to do, like Naperville, Wheaton, many of these cities that have revitalized are downtown, and you can park in a parking lot and see businesses within one, two, three blocks. You really can't go very far, in Naperville in particular, without finding a flat parking lot, not just high-rise parking lots or structures, but there are several of those as well. But I'd rather go for the inexpensive possibility here if the timing's right.
If I could just add, I'd like to expand on what Director DeVito said and address your comments, in particular Alderman Baker. And you bring up downtown Naperville, and if you think of downtown Naperville, they also have the zero lot line with the construction of their buildings. So as Director DeVito pointed out, this is in keeping with the design guidelines. Also, I would say to you, if you think about when you're driving down, through the downtown, think of the streetscape. Think of the empty buildings that are not there right now, and by having the buildings come up to the zero lot line, you're keeping that downtown feel. We're very fortunate that the petitioner worked with the city to create on-street parking off of Fifth Street so that it does add that additional parking. So staff does support this. There's an additional element that I think really adds to this development when you look at the outdoor patio, is to have the ability to grab a sandwich, grab a coffee, and just sit outside and enjoy the food or enjoy the drink. So this is, I can tell you, staff has worked directly with the developer and looked through a number of different iterations of the plan, and this is an excellent plan, and I would guess that the petitioner would also tell you that a number of the users are going to be using that drive-thru, especially at different points of the day, to be able to pick up their cup of coffee or sandwich or whatever it is. But just wanted to be able to address your particular points.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to open the door for a possibility. I'm happy with the design. I know it's gone through all the process, and I'm going to, I'm going to say yes, but this gives the developer a last second to think about if that parking lot were available and could be shared somehow, and I don't have an idea for that, other than just to create more parking for that part of town, right, to be used right in that area.
Thank you. Alderman Fanukin?
Ellen, I know there's been some discussion about having the exit from the drive-thru be right-turn only in the interest of safety, but as I'm seeing this as proposed, it's not, has that issue been worked through, the satisfaction of everybody that'll be safe with the additional traffic going out on Lincoln Highway?
You know, I don't have an answer for you on that. I believe that it was left that we had the right to require it to be right out, but we hadn't made that decision.
Right, well, I see that that's one of the options given to us here in the packet tonight.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I voiced some concern to Derek over the issue. If I may, Chief, you know, you're the traffic expert. If you'd like to give an opinion on the added traffic load from Fifth Street on the Lincoln Highway at that point, if you see that being a matter of safety or not?
I don't know that it's going to change anything going out, other than it'll be more steady at times, for sure, during the mealtimes, especially for the demand for food. It's, the big problem in that area is it's a short distance. So turning right onto Lincoln Highway or heading eastbound, probably not going to be a big problem. Those who enter into the nearest lane trying to turn left could create a problem. But I don't know that it's going to be any more or less than any other event, like when Stagecoach Theaters is in place. It's certainly going to have to be something people consider. A right-turn preference out would be the safest, without question. It's hard for me to say without somebody doing a traffic study, to be honest with you.
I guess it occurs to me that Gerard Street comes into that intersection as well. So traffic from the post office will be conflicting. Where Stagecoach is primarily ours, the post office is closed.
I concur with that, ma'am.
Alderman Baker?
My bet is that the way to do this is to watch and see how bad it gets, or whether it turns into a problem, and if it does come back, and with the support of a traffic study, consider closing down the Third Street Railroad Crossing, maybe making that Fifth Street there one-way to the south. We could even consider closing down the railroad crossing at Sixth. I mean, if we're going to do it, we may as well encompass all three of those possibilities that have been tossed around for decades, and in fact, since I've been in town, the one-way streets have changed a couple of times.
So Dave, you'd be with Fifth Street one-way south, you'd be forcing traffic exiting the post office through the Stagecoach parking lot, or the parking lot to the east of Stagecoach, onto?
No, they'd go out to Fifth. They just, when they get to Fifth Street, they'd have to go south.
Okay.
But I haven't driven and thought that through, like I have Third Street and Sixth Street, that definitely we had some opportunities here that were passed up, but eventually, in fact, Third Street in the past, it was tossed around in open session, closing that off and doing a pedestrian overpass to get to that big parking lot. So there's a lot of future possibilities that ought to be discussed in the next five years while we still have a TIF.
Mayor? If I may, one of the TIF projects that we expected to bring to you for funding in the next fiscal year would be an engineering study. I had referenced it earlier regarding having the one-way back on Fifth, and then we also would look at Gerard, some possible improvements there, but just totally changing the streetscape around the theater and opening it up more, and so we could bring back consideration for the traffic flow then, for you.
Other discussion from council? I'll turn, Dwayne Brown is registered to speak on this topic.
Dwayne Brown, Fourth Ward. I want to speak on this subject, but first I wanted to briefly touch on the losing Brian Bemis dealership, Toyota dealership. I think we're going to regret this in the future. We'll have one new dealership in the city of DeKalb, and projections for tax money are, I don't want to give any figures, but over 10 years, it's going to be a lot of money. We're going to regret that in the future. I realize it was only 20%, but somehow I think the city council should have worked something out on that. I had a comment on the fast-food restaurant, the proposal for the special use permit. I was talking to a friend earlier and before any information came out that there was a proposal for one, and I said that would be a perfect location for a subway. Well, I'm a visionary, because now, now it's proposed. And in addition, also Dunkin' Donuts, and as I understand, some type of pizza restaurant. I think this is exactly what the area needs. It's been vacant, it's been the empty auto dealership of Sawyer's for quite a few years until they demolished it, and I realize there's going to be some traffic problems. Anyone coming out, especially eastbound traffic, could be a problem, turning off Fifth Street. But I think it'll work out, I think it'll be fine, and I think it's exactly what we need. And I know the revisions went down from the first proposal to 7,600 square feet, but I think, I think this is exactly what we need, and I hope the council approves it, approves the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Other discussion from council? I'll ask for a roll call then.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Moving to reports on communications. Alderman Jacobson?
No.
Alderman Fanukin?
I'd like to congratulate the DeKalb Cooperative Girls Gymnastics Team on their second-place finish in the state, and the individual girls that medaled in their specific events.
Thank you. Alderman Markort?
No report.
Alderman Snow?
No report.
Alderman Noriko?
I attended the beloved community dinner last night. It was a wonderful event. I think this probably was the largest group there, over 50 people, and much more so than the last event. Really represented a cross-section of the community. Chief Lowry gave a presentation on community outreach activities of the police department. I think that was very useful and very well-received. I would encourage citizens and staff to attend these dinners. It's a wonderful way to meet new people. I met some NIU students that otherwise I never would have come across, so please, they're noted in the chronicle, so please try to attend.
Thank you. I would note, Chief Phillips from NIUPD presented as well, appreciated both presentations. Q and A was suggested to be entertained at the next meeting of the chiefs. Alderman Baker?
In light of Sycamore's Bemis Toyota incentive, I would like to ask the city council to review and reconsider the city's business incentive policies. I believe it is our best interest, it is in our best interest to review DeKalb's policies with other municipalities to ensure that ours are competitive and in alignment with our long-term goals. I propose we have this discussion at the next committee of the whole meeting on March Now, I'm going to try to not be emotional. I'm thinking back to, oh, 12 years ago or so, maybe a little bit more, when we learned at a committee of the whole meeting that the Sycamore Council of then had approved a 50-50 sharing on a particular retail project, which they bragged that they had two 50,000 square-foot box stores to anchor it, and I was quite emotional that night. I used the word poaching, I used the word nuclear war. I also said that if they take a half a million from the city of DeKalb, I will personally go up there and find a million dollars' worth of payback and move it to the city of DeKalb, even if it meant we got zero out of it. I meant those words. The next day, then-city manager Bill Nicholas put in a call to Mark Bernanke, and I was called in, and the three of us were informed by the then-city manager in Sycamore that I was absolutely right, they really were after Target, and that was what I assumed that night, and they, in order to prevent war, because there'd been several, and I think former Alderman Capitan mentioned, there'd been several going backs between DeKalb and Sycamore, the Farm and Fleet, the Joyce Pontiac, before that, the Kmart was taken by Sycamore, back when Al Davenport was on the council. That's why if you go up in that area, you're going to be really surprised. You have a Sycamore address, but you're paying your real estate taxes, DeKalb City Schools, 428, the lines have been crossed many times. There was supposed to be a spirit of agreement in place. It's one thing if a retailer that's not in the area at all compares the two cities, but for an extra incentive to be offered, as they did in Moonies, and now the Toyota, there's nothing to be thought of but poaching. That's exactly what they just did. They had an incentive in place that I was aware of that was 10% sharing. They have upped it to 50% to speed up and be able to give Toyota what they need to think about leaving DeKalb. And if they think that I personally won't react, they got another thing coming. I'm going to sit back for a little while, try to let cooler heads prevail, and I think we have an opportunity here to figure out a long-term plan, but just something that I think everybody needs to notice, and I noticed it myself last- last week, we have a new council right now. This thing started with Brian Bemis eighteen months ago. And since then, three people have come onto the council. We have some new attitudes, some new opportunity here. And the ways of the old should not be assumed that that's the way we plan on operating from this day forward. But the council needs some information. We need to be able to look at our incentives that are already in place for DeKalb, specifically what they're in place for in Sycamore to compare on these deals. But there are surrounding communities. This is far-reaching, and it's a perfect timing. Because if somebody's coming to look at DeKalb, even for an industrial park or retail, they might be considering Aurora, they might be even considering Rockford. These opportunities have come and gone, and we've been able to snag through education and understanding on the council and our staff, since I've been here almost fifteen years, many of these deals. But there's absolutely no excuse for what Sycamore just did. I think they didn't think about it. They thought we were not going to react. Well, we are.
Thank you. I would note for council, Alderman Baker is certainly within our guidelines of raising a matter of public concern. Any member of council has the right to bring to the attention of council at any meeting of the council, at the time for council reports, any matter of public concern. I think Alderman Baker's concern reinforces the need to review our guidelines. I would suggest looking at communities within a thirty-five-mile radius of DeKalb. I think we need to entertain conversation on the engagement with area communities. We need to build positive relationships with neighbors to enhance economic vitality of the area, including the city of DeKalb, Sycamore, and DeKalb County. The county is renewing a convening of the county economic summit in the near future. We have the approval of an enterprise zone, which really changes the playing field for us. We need to not view ourselves as an island. But I would support engaging in those conversations. Alderman Baker?
For clarification, what Bill Nicholas offered through Mark Bernanke, and I was in that same phone call, it was a three-way conversation, actually on speakerphone in Mark's office, he said that he'd worked out with the council of Sycamore that if, in fact, it came to fruition, and they were obviously quite nervous of it, because I called it, caught it, they didn't know if we'd catch it or not, he pledged that any sales tax that the city of DeKalb lost, Sycamore would return it to us over a five-year period for those first five years. So I would expect nothing less from Sycamore on this Bemis deal, and I'm going back to Moonies, too.
Alderman Favor?
This is celebrating Engineers Week. Just wanted to remind everyone of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. I would like to suggest that we, as council, give serious thought to our treatment of developers. I would encourage us to treat any developers with proposed projects with dignity and respect as they come before council. I've learned that a number of developers have a concern in coming to council for the lack of that dignity and respect shown to their specific projects. They represent an economic engine, bringing business, services, and jobs to our community. I'd like to encourage us to remain business-friendly in demeanor and practices in our deliberations. So I would just ask council members to respect those thoughts, and let's create a positive atmosphere as we look to grow our business community. City manager, Gora?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
City attorney?
No report.
City clerk?
No report.
Assistant city manager?
No report. Just looking forward to the 2025 strategic plan process, now that we'll be implementing it.
Thank you. Chief Lowry?
I wanted to take a couple minutes of your time for a point of transparency and clarification. In November of fifteen, I came to you in regard to two budgeted vehicles for the police department, and you gave us approval for that. As part of that approval, we were decommissioning three vehicles. Two of those vehicles were decommissioned and auctioned off. The third one was being decommissioned as well, until we found that one of our other vehicles that was in the same mileage range was in worse shape and needed significant work to repair it. It had an axle going out and several other severe things, including the floorboards were completely rusted out of the car. So the cost to repair the vehicle far outweighed its value. So we opted to keep the one vehicle that we were going to decommission in the beginning. So I wanted to let you know that it wasn't a shell game, that we, in fact, took the worst of the worst, once a mechanic had to deal with the immediate action on the car that broke down. And that car will be totally decommissioned, and it'd be the third vehicle that gets turned in. The other thing is, on March twelfth, I hope you can put this in your calendar, you'll be getting an invitation soon, the police department will be hosting an event in our community room in regard to police use of deadly force. An orientation will be for the elected officials, city department heads and city staff. We're also including Northern Illinois University in this. It'll be an introductory program to see how it works at that level. We'll be using firearm simulators to have you make some decisions, like you were a police officer, in real-time setting. That program will be March twelfth, from one in the afternoon until four in the afternoon. If we get done early, that's okay, we'll get out early. But we'll also invite some of our local media representatives, and not that they would ever get a story wrong, but we'd like to have them come and participate in that program as well, and actually take a part in the decision-making whether or not to shoot, based on facts presented to them. I think you'll enjoy the technology. I think it'll open up some doors for conversation, and I think it will also illustrate to you why scenario-based training is a positive thing. So we hope to get that email out here in the next couple of days, and look forward to having that. After this, after the twelfth, we then hope to refine the program and take it to other groups within the community. Thank you.
Okay. And Chief, you said that time was one to four?
Yes, sir.
On the twelfth?
One to four.
Thank you. Assistant Finance Director Miller?
No report.
Chief Hicks?
Good evening. Reminder, starting March first, vote early, vote often for the new name of the new ladder truck. It's going to go on service sometime in the middle of April, so we hope to have it announced by then. So, thank you.
Director DeVito?
Tomorrow morning at eight-thirty at Feranda's, we're going to be hosting the monthly meeting of the downtown merchants. All downtown business owners are invited to attend or send their managers. We're going to be talking about some of the events planned for this summer in the downtown area, just so they can get them under their planning calendar. The Landmark Commission meets this Thursday night at seven o'clock. We actually have three buildings coming to them for input towards building facade work. The DeKalb Area Women's Center, 1021 State, the nail salon that is going into the former Megan Morrison Building at 237 Lincoln Highway on the north side. And then the owner of the house has come to ask for assistance with facade money. And then finally, the Building Board of Appeals is making great progress on looking at the 2015 building codes. They are halfway through Chapter Twenty-four now, which is the administrative chapter. And they'll be looking at Part Two of that at their March fourth meeting on Friday. They'll be meeting at nine o'clock in this room.
Thank you. Ellen, we currently have four commission members seated on landmarks, correct?
Yes, and I have another letter of interest. We put out a press release. Thank you for reminding me. We are looking for commissioners to join that commission, people willing and interested in working and preserving some of the built environment in the city and seeing preservation of our history through the buildings. So anyone who's interested should send an email to myself or to the mayor with a summary of qualifications.
At this point, Ellen, we have three seats being considered?
Actually, the ordinance, which was created in seventy-nine, has twelve slots on it.
I realize.
Yeah.
But my goal is to likely reduce that to a commission of seven members.
Seven is more effective.
So we have at least three seats available.
Correct.
Okay. So any individuals interested, please tender a letter of interest, a brief resume to my attention for Landmarks Commission. Tim Holdman?
No report, Your Honor.
Okay. With that, I believe we've concluded business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved by Alderman Markwart, seconded by Alderman Fanoukian. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.